We don't have any hearings this evening. We have a number of work session topics. And we'll start with and probably spend most of our time on preparing for the Housing Forum in a couple of weeks. And we have a number of materials to go through. Before we get started, does anybody have any questions? Or we start walking through this? Mark, are you able to put any of this on the screen as we talk about it?
Yeah, I have it up right now.
Okay.
I'm ready for you to pick a topic so I can pick a file.
Okay, where do you want to start?
I would start with the cluster subdivision analysis because it's so similar to the other regulations we looked over. It's kind of the last one in the series. So to be this one, Mark, the one that says April 16th. It's kind of the overview and benefits of cluster residential district in Brentwood. And then it talks about key takeaways from the 2024 Master Plan Housing Chapter. Says a little other things that were mentioned related to cluster housing. And then on the second page, there are the potential updates, which we discussed with Mark and Glenn last week at a meeting. And they felt it could come forward to all of you. So there are a number of things that are listed here that we feel were either referenced in the Housing Chapter as things to address, or best practices from the New Hampshire Housing Toolbox, or are based on some of the other clusters we've worked on in other communities. So we just went down through here, talked a little bit about the potential, if you were to make changes to the cluster provision. To bring it up to more, our common term is conservation subdivision. So that would be clustering has a negative connotation for some people, not for everybody. But it does speak a little bit more to kind of what maybe how Brentwood would want to use it, which is to both accommodate housing, but also make sure that you're setting aside open space, that that's a value. It sounds like that resonates.
As the newest member of the board, I was just saying that it does have a negative connotation.
Yeah.
I think that's a great suggestion.
It's an easy change.
Yes.
Of all of them.
Liz, I know you said last time you don't.
Could you come to a microphone, please? I put new batteries in the room.
Did you?
So my, my problem with, I don't mind if you say cluster slash conservation, or cluster with conservation. But to me, a conservation subdivision means there's not a bill, like that it's conserved. Not that it's new developed. I have a really, I, to me, it sounds not transparent and very shady.
Yeah, I mean, the word, the word subdivision, sounds like a development.
I know, but I just, that's just, I don't know, maybe Becky has an opinion of that, too. I, I have a problem with just leaving it conservation.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't want to, I don't want to get stuck on this right now because there's a lot to go through. But do, did you guys both, Becky, did you get a packet?
I couldn't have, but this is my first time, my third.
You need to come to a microphone, I apologize, we've got a public comment. I'm a stickler, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Becky Dunham, Chair of Conservation, this is the first time that I've heard that terminology. I think if you want to use conservation subdivision, it's going to have to come to Conservation to see if they're comfortable with that. My opinion.
It's a word?
It's a word.
It is not.
It's a term.
It is a term.
I don't know how common it is, but.
It's very common and we can, I mean, we, I was in Barrington Tuesday night where they've always had a conservation subdivision. They got away from clustering a long time ago. The Conservation Commission and the Planning Board are both working on that with applicants.
That would be nice to be part of this working team, too, to be available to have some feedback.
Right, no, absolutely. And the intent is that an applicant comes in to do a subdivision, that they look at the whole parcel and they actually look at priority areas, whether they're primary or secondary conservation areas. And they set those aside and look at the areas that are most appropriate for development and group or cluster the development on smaller lots closer together using less of the overall parcel.
So as this process moves forward and Planning Board is considering changing the language that's in our regulations.
Right.
Conservation will be a part of that discussion to talk about whether it's a top priority, a next tier, develop a land. We'd be integral to that discussion.
So at this point, we're just floating these ideas.
I know.
So I would get the Conservation Commission to come to the event on the 15th.
We had planned to do it, we've been talking about that. But to be integral to part of that would be much appreciated.
And just to point out, too, I think what we're trying to counter, and it sounds like you have maybe five or so of these developments in town already, is just rather than sprawl across the entire parcel, really try to get a little bit of a, address the housing issue while also addressing conservation needs.
I think the most recent cluster has been that way.
Okay.
Tight process with a lot of open land.
That's great.
Yeah.
Glenn and I talked about this quite at length, and we feel that we shouldn't get dragged down in this cluster development conversation because our cluster development ordinance works, obviously. We have five of them.
Right.
So let's try not to get bogged down in that process. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to eliminating it from the conversation altogether. I don't really want to put too much in front of voters and try to push a process that might be confusing to some people. As previously stated, we have a cluster ordinance, it works, they're being built, they have been built. I think there's a better fruit to be harvested here.
So we didn't, we didn't let you get very far on this.
You're, you're here, I'm here, hear from you, more than vice versa.
Yeah, I mean, I think through this process, I do want to get from you an understanding of what you think could be better.
Sure.
But it, along the lines of what Mark was saying, my big concern with this whole thing is that if people oppose something, the whole thing's going down. And if we, for example, you know, we need to be compliant with the state law on workforce housing.
Right.
We have to do that. And there are a couple of other things we really want to do, and we've heard from people that they want to do. But if they get stuck on something that's controversial, then we're going to lose the whole thing.
When you say that, are you thinking about at a public outreach event? Because you don't have to bring all of these forward together or at all.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, like, when they eventually go to vote, yeah.
But you, if you were to talk about cluster or conservation subdivision with people and have a conversation and see that people wouldn't want to change it, or you're going to lose something.
Yeah.
You could, I mean, when we're done with this, you could set it aside and say, we're not going to break something. But if you don't want to bring it up at all, that's another option.
Yeah.
Microphone, Mr. Stevens.
I missed a number of meetings here recently, but I don't believe the board is talking about negating cluster zoning or taking the cluster zoning out.
No, no, just tweaking.
So this is just minor amended, amended changes, like in terms of words. I think the word is great, it says exactly what it is.
Well, while we're on it, if I haven't gotten people worked up yet, I will next.
Go for it.
You might want to stay. So if you look, when we get to that poster, there are actually, all these things are kind of on page two of this and then on the poster. You know, if, if you wanted to see future subdivisions in the balance of your biggest residential area use clustering or conservation subdivision every time, typically the way that happens successfully is towns require it, which is a big conversation, that any subdivision happening in this part of the town would have to follow this process so that they're following a really intentional design process, or they incentivize it. Or they just kind of build a culture around, they have a development community that likes using it because they see the value in shorter roads and, you know, less infrastructure investment. But there are a couple of ways, but the bonuses or incentives for, you know, having more open space or including some affordable units or whatever the metrics are that you like, that's one way to go. It's like the carrot and the stick.
It's density calculation.
Right.
In no way are we saying that a conventional subdivision is going to be disallowed, right? This is just an addition, you know, another option.
I'm just bringing it up, you could say that if you wanted to. But there are very few communities that have gone that route.
Right.
Yeah, Jaffrey being one, and they've been for like 15 or 20 years.
Conventional subdivisions, as we think of them.
You have to show that you can't do a conservation subdivision. So the proof is on showing how you can't comply.
Interesting.
And there are some sites that would be really challenging to kind of do it and, but that's, I would say they're probably an outlier at this point. Most incentivize it or give it as an option like you do here.
Do you know how many, how much land in Jaffrey, who you said Jaffrey, did they have placed in conservation?
I don't know the percentage townwide, and they've maybe only had a couple more conservation subdivisions than you've had. So it hasn't resulted, I mean, it's not a hotbed of development the way you are, where you're closer to the, to bigger population centers.
Yeah, I mean, we do have 20, I believe the figure is 25% of Brentwood already placed in conservation.
They might have more of you because they do have Menadoc, they have a state park.
Oh, they have a state park.
Yeah, that's an unfair advantage.
It is an unfair advantage, it is.
If we took that away, it might be less.
Can I, can I ask you to explain, one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet? Consider allowing all residential uses permitted.
Yeah, so some conservation subdivisions or cluster subdivision provisions will allow more than single-family homes. An example not too far from here would probably be in Exeter, Watson Woods, which has, I believe, single-family, maybe a couple of duplexes and then a couple of their maybe six-pack buildings that are part of that open space development. So there are some places where they've allowed more than single-family home and been able to get even more density for a same number of units.
And so this is in one zone, you're, you're saying?
You could say even just, you may be able, only be through a conservation subdivision that you could have. And maybe you don't want all those options, but it's an opportunity to ask people if they would be open to that.
So if you're, if you're building, the idea would be if you're building a conservation subdivision that you could have duplexes as part of that.
You could have townhouses if you wanted to. I mean, think about it, it gives the developer even an easier time kind of grouping things and creating some affordability. But that's a big conversation.
Yeah.
Does Watson Woods have the facilities with septic and water that were out there, or is it?
That's a really good question, I'm not sure.
It is a really good question.
Yeah, we could find that out.
Come up to the microphone.
Yeah, we could find that, I'm not sure, because they are on the other side of 101.
Yes, that's, yeah.
It's a good question.
Especially if you're having six units or multiple.
But at the same time, if you're clustering units because they're in townhouses and duplexes, it gives you more space for those septic systems.
So, yeah, it just brings the density calculation further together.
Right, a little more flexibility in layout.
Even in our cluster ordinance right now, it's a 50-foot separation. We have given out variances for that.
Yep.
To bring them down to 25, which you have to sprinkle. But if you can put two homes together, you could get the same density with, still maintaining a 50-foot separation. You know, I'm just practically.
Other questions on what we proposed, just in the review, the analysis?
Just one of the questions, so in terms of, we're separating this for the evening here in a couple of weeks. You're not going to ask people?
We've, we've prepared a poster and a worksheet in case you do want to ask people about this. But it's your choice at the end of the day. We need to know for sure by like next Friday which posters are, in which worksheets and any edits, so we can go to print. But you really have, you have tonight to talk about it, and if the Chair or Mark want to spend more time and hear from people after tonight, we have time for that, so you could decide.
I mean, I think it's great, awesome, but I think Kristin has a very important concern that we don't overload people.
Sure.
And if we as a board here, who've worked with this for years, have questions on what some of these things mean, you throw this whole package of information out to respondents at the public hearing, public meeting, they're going to.
No, that's fair.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just afraid that things will get a little muddled if we're, if we try to do too much.
At the end of the day, you have four areas that we're presenting. We've presented as many as 14. And people can handle it. Like, they, they won't focus on all of them, they won't all be of interest. There may be people who have concern about clustering or see it as a real good strategy who may focus on that one more. Maybe other people say, I don't get it, it doesn't matter me, but I'm really interested in the multi-family stuff.
I, I don't see any harm in putting it front of people, getting their feedback, and then we can keep all this information for a later date and possibly move forward with it at some point, maybe.
I'm just, just wondering how much they'll be able to absorb and then make a judgment at night.
Right. Let me give you an overview of the night and of the materials as we did, Mark and, for you and Glenn, last Wednesday. And then I'll call out specific materials in the packet and then talk about the flyer last because hopefully you're all just getting friends and family to come out to the event. We will have an online version, too, so if you look around the room that night and you see people aren't there that you think should be weighing in, we'll have postcards you can hand out to them, and it'll be a digital one that Mark can continue to send around that says, you know, go online, fill this out. So when people come in, they're going to get an attendee questionnaire, it's really short. It's just, for one, not everybody will agree to sign into a meeting. And we don't want them to leave or anything like that, we want them to participate. But this is anonymous, and so people will generally take it. We're going to put all the handouts, this was Glenn's idea, put all the handouts in a packet and hand everybody a packet when they come in so they know what their homework is, they have a little bit of ownership. It's only five pieces of paper. But the first thing is just to get a sense if they're a resident, a business owner, if they were working in the town, you know, who are they? How long have they lived here? And then the other sheets relate to the four different topics that are kind of regulatory topics. Clustering, as we talked about, accessory dwelling units, which we've talked about at past meetings, multi-family housing and workforce housing. So they'll have these five sheets, and they can actually write whatever they want on them. They can write as much or as little as they want. They'll be told that they can also, if they have additional thoughts when they get home, they can go online and they can tell us more stuff.
I'm just wondering where this is going to be open, five to seven, right?
Right.
So you're going to have a lot of people, a good percentage of people that may stumble in at six o'clock.
Which is totally fine.
So when they have all this information, they may be interested in all. If they're trying to learn what's going on at the meeting for 45 minutes, would they have time to fill out?
They, they will, if they choose not to, they'll have the online version at home. And the online version will have all these same posters.
So just one question I have about the cluster subdivisions, the, like, the worksheet, like, the check sheet that people, that folks are filling out.
Yep.
So the first question is, would you support modifying Brentwood's existing cluster subdivision regulations to allow for more flexibility in use in town? Like, so you've put together like a really good, like, kind of condensed version of like what our existing ordinance is.
Yeah.
But I wonder if there is an even, this may be a tall ask, but even, like, an even more condensed way to describe it just for folks who maybe are coming but don't necessarily have a full understanding of our, because some, if somebody is coming in, you know, because they're really curious about what's happening and what changes might be happening, and they see a question, do you support modifying the existing cluster subdivision? I still think, as condensed as this is, it can still.
It won't be that, it'll be this poster.
Oh.
These posters are 36 by 48, they're huge.
Oh, what?
And in the corner, it just says potential changes, does that help?
You're way ahead of me.
No, no, I don't know that I am, you have to be nervous for a minute.
No, no.
But the idea with the posters, let me just take a step back, I'll come back to your question.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there are, there are two sets of posters. Some others, some of them are just educational background information, as we talked about, you thought was helpful. And so we have your housing survey created into a poster, just pulling what people have told you.
Yeah.
Which is nice because it shows that you're hearing both sides. You're hearing, we recognize there's an affordable housing issue, there are people who need homes, but we're also not that excited about development, so we're hearing both, right? So we have that. We have another poster, which is a summary of your housing chapter, so it pulled infographics and facts. People who are really curious and want to get up to speed can spend the time at the event or online reading all this and not have to read the whole chapter, or they can go right past it. And then we had one just about the, that they'll see first, just about the Housing Opportunity Project that you're in, kind of the phases that it's covering, and some of the issues that you're trying to address related to limited affordable homeownership and rental options, lack of housing choice for workers and aging residents, and balancing new housing with environmental protection and fiscal responsibility, all that. So they can get an overview of what you're doing. The last one is about workforce housing in Brentwood. It's about the state workforce housing law. It points out that you're currently not in compliance because it was withdrawn. So it gives people a little bit of an overview, and we put in some, in the bottom right corner, the median home purchase price and the median income. So that people could see that it's tough at the median income to afford the median home. And at this, we're not just talking about people maybe in the lowest salaries or household incomes. We're talking about a lot of people in different phases of their lives.
More than 30, you're in countless.
Right, exactly.
I think it's important to put in there the figure that is workforce housing, like it's 396?
We can, but it depends on which percent AMI you want to use.
That, oh, in this fine print, it does say that.
It's on the workforce housing poster.
Fair enough.
And then we did, you had asked at the last meeting, and I wasn't sure this was possible, and then the next day we found it. You asked if we could list all of the legislation happening in Concord, remember that, we had that conversation?
That's my favorite.
It's a little bit scary, but it's, there's a poster that's actually, was created by Housing Action New Hampshire that has all the land use reforms and regulatory reforms that are currently being considered in Concord. So that'll be a large poster people can read.
And a couple of these have, have been killed, I think.
So maybe what we should do before the 15th is we'll just double-check and we can update it to.
Yeah, because, because a, a, a couple of these bills, I believe, are already dead.
That's a good.
Although, for educational purposes, I think, the idea is to show people like this, these are the kinds of things that are being proposed.
Right.
Even if they're, even if they failed.
That's true.
So they're going to be able to walk up to a poster, will be somebody monitoring that poster to answer questions?
We'll be around, we try not to hover because people stop thinking, and they just look and say, what do I need to do? If we stay back, people, it's very intuitive and it's all available. People will go through, they'll, they'll decide how much they're ready to absorb, and we'll be there. We'll have, like, there'll be three or four of us.
Okay.
Team, and then if you're all there just participating, this is the type of event where we have these four or five kind of informational posters, and then we have these other four kind of regulation-related things we're asking for feedback. It tends to be a lot of chatter. People see a planning board member or a select board member, they may grab them and say, what do you think of this? Or was that development, I'm thinking of a cluster subdivision? And it ends up being a little bit more engaging. And then the people that come in who just really are concerned about development and want to tell us that can write that on all their worksheets and can let their voice be heard as their voice. And we'll be taking all this input at the end, whether it's in person or online. It all goes into Survey Monkey, we'll do an analysis and give you a summary of what we heard, but then we'll have all the raw data and appendix. So if you have comments about something, you'll see your comment.
Yes, so flipping through the, like, the info sheets, like, this, going back to my last question. It covers a lot of what I was thinking in terms of like providing more context. I guess the, the one thing that maybe I would want to hear the board's opinion on, because when we did the, the housing survey in the first round of, of HOP funding, and when Jen Rowden, like, you know, prepared the report and stuff, there, there was like a little, like a short, like, one or two pager that just kind of like went over some of the jargon that we use.
Yep.
And, and like, you covered a lot of this here, like, what are sub, what are ADUs, what are cluster subdivisions, what is multi-family housing? Like, each sheet has a little bit of that, but I wonder if folks think there'd be utility to have, like, you know, a one or two pager that just has them all together, kind of like what we had in the report out for the housing survey?
Do we have it on the website? I feel like there was a glossary on the website.
On the town projects?
Yeah.
Like an appendix, maybe, or something that we can.
Just a handout that has the, the biggest terms that we're talking about in the subdivision.
Yeah, just, yeah, just because I, I don't want folks to come and feel.
That's fair.
And feel excluded because they were using jargon that isn't, that isn't the way that most people talk, necessarily.
Okay, yeah, we could take a stab at that, we could make it, it's not a very big packet that they have, so we could make a sheet and. Run it by staff and make sure we haven't missed any.
Yeah, but, but then again, if, if I'm the only one on, at the table that has that concern, I don't want to dictate, you know?
More information, or it's just, again, how, how much people absorb or tune out.
Exactly.
You don't want their eyes glazing over either.
Yeah, it's a balance.
This is the website.
It was there.
Mark, this is our planning board website.
You need longer stems here.
That was a bit sassy. It was sassy, but you start out great like this and then.
We found that glossary.
Okay, so this is what's on our planning board website.
The future housing website, yes, sir.
And again, I'm a little perplexed as the fact that, or what I think, it's going to take some time for people to absorb this. So can a lot of this information go up on that?
I was going to put it up on there, but I wanted your approval first. Because in the email from Crystal, it says, do not disseminate this to people.
Yeah, we didn't want drafts out there and then you saying, like, we don't want to look at clustering or conservation subdivision, and it's out and it's already.
Oh, darn good point. In fact, I, I'd be more inclined to think that we ought to let the meeting go by, the community involvement series go, or meeting go by, and then sometime in the next month's time, post all this stuff on there so that.
You don't want to put it up?
I'll put it up immediately.
I mean, you could, but I think the gentleman was saying that maybe people get form ideas or form opinions that aren't, you know, well thought out or.
No, I think that's okay, we just didn't want them to, we didn't want people to see draft material you hadn't vetted.
Exactly.
Want to make sure that you were okay with it and with the approach. Posting them on the website is a great idea, they'll also be in the, it's nice to have them on the website, so if you don't want to do the questions again, you can just go see the posters.
Yeah.
And so we'll work with Mark on that.
But the, the, the reason I bring this up is, is because, like, for example, like, something like area median income, like, people know what that is, of course, but they may not be used to hearing AMI as an acronym.
Sure.
So that could create a disconnect there.
So would you like to use that sheet as the handout?
I would defer, I, I love this sheet, but.
As long as it's consistent, yeah, as long as it's consistent.
You know, we probably should, instead of making it a click item, have it as a scroll item.
Right.
So you don't have to search it out.
Yeah, right.
But I think what we're talking about is printing some out.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. I'm parlaying on that, that maybe we should put it as a scroll item within the website itself.
I like that, too.
And this is a lot of great work, so I don't want to hold.
No, no, no.
But you did mention, I think it was Jaffrey, was one of your recent examples of this process. So just roughly, how many people are there in Jaffrey, are they 1,000 people?
How many people live in Jaffrey?
Just rough idea.
I think it's more than 5,000.
Okay, so not, I mean, somewhat more than Brentwood, but not a lot. So I would just be interested, how many people came out to this informational seminar?
So that was not, well, the one we did on conservation subdivision was in the fall, and I think we had 50. But that was a work session, it was just on that one ordinance. Ones where we've looked, like you, we've looked at housing information, then I looked at a bunch of different strategies. The one we've done most recently was New London. That was 14 different strategies. We looked at it in focus group for a whole morning, we had 100 people.
Really?
Nice.
Yeah, because a lot of people don't want housing in New London. And, but yet, what's interesting is the people that are participating, it's an older community. There's, there are a lot of retirees, there are a lot of people who love the community, and they want some additional housing options for themselves, and we've been able to point out that those don't exist. So it's starting to create an interest in housing and from a different angle than we ever thought it would happen. But there are people who would like to be out of their bigger home, but stay in town, and they see no options for a condo or a townhouse or a cottage, or for downsizing, exactly. Or for other friends or family who would like to move to the community and be part of the community to do so.
Right.
And then they've also been learning that, you know, town staff, police and fire, other folks can't find anything, they're commuting long distances. So one of the things we often say is, you have town meeting, how many people do you get for town meeting?
Must have 250 people, yeah.
It's larger than town meeting.
You'd get a percentage of that, would be my guess. But because we're having an in-person and an online, often we can get twice as many people. And we get twice as many people when you count the two together. So if we get 50 or 100 people to come through that night, we can get 50 or 100 people to do the online version. I don't know how many people you had for the first HOP.
For the survey?
I have to look back at the data.
150 or maybe 200, which was good for.
That is good, yeah, for a specific issue.
But I think we also really pushed it. Okay, I want to make sure that we get through everything. So a couple things real quick. I know I've said this before, and I'm, just might be my issue, but on the workforce housing one, I'm not so comfortable with just saying outright, we're not in compliance.
Yep.
I don't know if there's a better way, different way that we can say that. I do think it's good to say that we, we currently don't have one because it was voted out.
Okay, so you want.
And there is a requirement by state law that we make these opportunities available.
I don't have to say that it was voted out, but just to say that we don't currently have one and we are responsible for providing.
We don't currently have one, and under the, under the law, we're required to.
We can do that.
Address this.
Fix negativity out.
Yep, we can do that.
That's a good point.
On the, on all the maps, and I, I don't know if you have enough room, but when you first look, sometimes, like on this one, you know, it says multi.
The multi-family one?
I'm on the workforce housing one.
All right.
But the little purple section is multi-family, but the words are in the residential area. And I think, you know, a lot of people are going to be most interested in what's happening in this area, right? So if you can get the words on the, on the area that actually they go with.
Yeah, we can try, we could try.
I know some of these won't work, like Town Center won't work.
The challenge is some of them, yeah, the multi-family professional commercial in two separate areas. But I'll talk to Zach about that.
Even was moved over to the, the work verbiage was moved over to the margin.
Yeah, into the gray, yeah.
Or, or even beyond it.
Okay.
Yeah, something to, so that the words aren't in the main residential area.
Yeah, and even if you did like a key or some, like a key on the side.
Yeah, you could do the color.
Yeah.
Yep, we can do that. We were trying to get, yeah, that's helpful. Okay.
Cause otherwise, like I looked at this one first and it, I don't know.
Were there, were the others the same, I think, yes.
Yeah.
So clusters the same, it needs to be fixed, and.
Yeah, so maybe, um.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
It just might end up with more labels, which is fine.
Yeah.
Yep.
You, you don't think about it that way, but somebody that's in town in a specific area of town, see that written on there.
You figured they'd follow the arrow.
Um.
They'll be, the maps will be this big.
Yeah.
Which is good, you know?
Yeah.
Not as big as Mark has it on the screen, but.
But at first glance, because of where the words are, your eyes go to the residential, the main.
Sure.
Residential area, so.
Yeah, what else you have?
On the, on the questionnaires?
Yep.
I think if there are, um. There are, there are going to be cases where people are just, they just wanna say no, period. And we've had this discussion before, right, people have come to us, sat over there and said, don't allow any more development, which is not possible. So if we could word some of these as a choice, so it's not yes or no, but it's, would you support it? Would you support multifamily in this area, this area, this area, this area? They could not check any of them, and that would be their no, but I think when you start off with a, do you support this, yes or no?
Yeah.
You, you're gonna lose them after they say no.
So for the multifamily one, you wanna list the areas and let them tell us?
Yeah, would, so, you know, do you support allowing more multifamily in, and then list them, and then let them check?
We can do that.
Which ones?
Could, um, can I just note one quick thing, Kristen?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, uh, not to get sidetracked, I just, uh, very quickly wanna go back to the legislative piece, cause we had talked about, um, updating that. Something, something that I can do, um, by, um, you know, by like the middle of next week or by Friday, cause that seems like that was the date you were looking at.
Yep.
Since we're past crossover day, is, um, put together a list of, of those bills, taking out the ones that have been either killed, or some of them have been amended to the point where they're no longer recognizable to what they originally were. Um, and I just think, so, so I'm happy to take that on, but I just think that the updated list will be important, because it's gonna impact, like, the ADUs, for instance, the state may tell us that we have to allow detached anyway, that could end up happening. Um, and so just, that's why I'm, I'm just, I'm volunteering to, to condense that list, just so that we can have a full picture of what bills are left and how they could impact the decisions that we make in town.
I think that's a wonderful idea, and I think it's almost important that that's the first poster they see.
Right.
Right?
Sure.
This is, we're not being driven simply, there are other things driving this, it's not just the town of Brentwood.
Right.
It's the state of New Hampshire, and, and you're gonna get mandated by the state, so you better start creating ordinances, so the state doesn't tell you what to do.
And this is our chance to do it in a way that works for us.
Correct.
You know, so.
So the only thing, um, Doug, this would add to your work, but in some of these cases, it would be helpful to know more specifically what they're proposing. So for example, requiring extraordinary restrictions on residential property has to serve up, like, what does that mean? Because if they see, you know, are there bills that are saying you can't have two acre lots or something like that?
Yeah, I can, I can dig deep into some of those, cause one of those bills, I think the one that you mentioned, has to do with like parking restrictions and things like that, that, that they.
That one might be, there was one that was a five acre, like you can't.
Yeah, yeah, they, they have a definition for owners' regulations, and I think parking is part of it, and there are other things too, so I can dig into that.
Part of that legislation breaks it down into whether you have public water and public sewer.
That's true.
Yeah.
Should it, and when you look at this, should it be looked at in prioritizing each one of the bills? Does that make sense or not?
W- w- we could, I was thinking more to kind of, um, give a list of, of what's out there.
Yeah.
You know, what bills haven't been killed yet, and give a little bit more, cause these have like the titles of the bills, and, but like give a little bit more of a descriptor of where they're at.
Synopsis.
Especially because the titles are misleading, once these bills get amended, the title.
You've mentioned that.
Sometimes gets to a point where the title really doesn't even tell you what the bill really does. And especially once we're past crossover and the senate has their saying committees of conference start, so I can kind of, you know, hone in on what these bills are actually doing, cause some of them are changing considerably.
That'd be great, so.
You know, there's a couple here that, or one of his house bill, uh, was it, uh, 685, allow manufactured housing on single family lots. Now that's something Brentwood already allows.
Yeah.
I think some people may come in and think that we're going to try to force something like that through, and it's something that Brentwood has had for 48 years.
Right, right.
And the same one, the next one, allow homes on smaller, smaller lot sizes starter homes act, and that's a big nay for 99% of people in Brentwood. So do we really need to have things that really don't affect the town of Brentwood? I mean, there's state law, but I, I think you're just, people are gonna interpret this as all these new laws and regs, we don't want that, we want Brentwood the way it is.
Yeah, wha- what I'm thinking is, when I do my analysis, I'll cast a wide net, and then when we circulate it, the rest of the board can say, you know what, I don't think this one is really relevant, because it are, we already covered this and, and, and things like that.
We need to.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to finalize this by Thursday.
Yeah, if you wanna circulate it, and if you wanna do that, you might wanna, we could include a statement at the top, and I'm happy to email back and forth with you, but that, to clarify, that these are things the state is considering, that would then be handed down to Brentwood to have to do, with all the other communities.
So, so with that in mind, I can get my analysis done by like Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, and then that'll give us some more wiggle.
And then a, yeah, a statement at the top to say, you know, like, did you know legis- legislature, um, legislators are considering a number of bills that would place more restrictions on local government's ability to direct our own zoning, something, yeah. I think it's good for people to be aware that that's, that's an issue in, um, the state house.
No, that's good, Doug, thanks.
But yeah, it's, it, we don't want people to look at that and say, though, oh, those are all new laws, or that we support them, or.
Right.
Needs to be clear.
Right, that, that like, it's, yeah, right.
We didn't just randomly make this up, you know what I mean?
But it's just for education, we're not endorsing it, we just want people to be aware that that's another factor.
These are our criticisms, it's just a question.
No, no, this is good, it's just.
You always get a lot of feedback from our group.
Needs to be your event, so it's important that we get this, so what do you have?
So just a little bit about how the procedure works, so.
Yeah.
When, once this May meeting is over, your group will then help to review the survey or review the information, and then suggest to us. When, when does your work, uh, end here in Brentwood?
Never. I mean, I think it could end in the fall, it could end next spring, it depends on how much time you need as we work through working on regulations.
I think that's great, I think by spring, so we're, we have our annual March town meeting.
Right.
These are all valid questions.
Yep.
But we're gonna have to keep hammering, keep reprinting and putting them in front of the newsletter and on our website, all this stuff, it's gonna take a while to see it. Even for planning board members.
Yeah.
This would be hard for a lot of us to sit down and come up with the question answers, especially with it a half hour.
Sure, sure. Yeah, the plan would be to have the event on the 15th, give people a couple weeks after the event, so take till at least the beginning of June, let people do the online version. Then Crystal, who you've met at these meetings, she'll put it all, she'll actually enter all the stuff from the 15th, and then she'll put it with everything that comes in online. And we'll create a report and come back to you and go over what we learned, and then you can think about it, you can, we can continue to have dialogue, and we can either immediately go into working on some land use regulation changes, or you can pause and have some dialogue as a town. So we're not, we don't wanna rush you?
We should consider all, but I think Kristen's point is that there's probably a lot of governments out there, but maybe we take the first three or four this year.
Right.
And also ta- take advantage of the information you've gathered and your advice, and have another six pack for next year.
Yeah, I mean, use the grant, I mean, you have this funding, if you can have us drafting stuff, even if you're not sure it's appropriate for 2026.
Yeah.
You could always rework it later, as Mark said. So the other, we've kinda touched on elements of the other four regulatory posters, they all have a map, as Kristen pointed out, they all have a potential changes section, which are the changes we've talked about at previous meetings, the cluster's the only one that's new. And we've tried to include some photos showing different approaches, different kinds of neighborhoods, um, a little bit on what these things are, a little bit on how they can help from a housing perspective, but if you have thoughts on any additional edits tonight or over the next few days, that would be helpful, and then we can, we're happy to make those.
Mixed use? We don't have a poster or, uh, questionnaire on that one.
No, um, because we've been seeing it as part of your multifamily approach. By allowing multifamily in the commercial district, I mean, the mixed use, you're thinking mostly Route 125?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is an important area for this town.
No, absolutely.
So maybe, maybe there's a way to tweak it so that it says, this could include mixed use in com- in the commercial zone?
So right now, when people have questions, right now in our commercial, on commercial industrial 125. You can, you can have a residential, make residential use of a piece of property. Do you think that, or does Glenn feel that our ordinances, as constituted presently, would not allow a, um, an application or allow approval, an application like the one we've seen adjacent to Tractor Supply, where you have more than one? I mean, does he think that our u- allowance for residential use in a, in the commercial zone precludes multifamily? See, that's what I always thought, and then talking to you there a couple weeks ago, you said, oh no, but multifamily runs all the way down 125.
That's correct, what we don't allow is commercial use and residential use on the same property. That's, that's. That'd be a mixed use ordinance.
Right, that's, that's something that's gonna be very important for, I think a lot of people would buy into that, it seems to make sense.
Yes, no, I, I, I agree 100%. I mean, I wasn't super opposed to that design review, and it, it looked doable and, and a good use of space. Do I wanna see another car lot? Not particularly, but the concept, I felt was a really good concept. So I, I think a good mixed use ordinance, I mean, uh.
I thought the problem with that one was the calculation, just.
Oh yeah, 100%.
The number of units, but I didn't realize that it was incompatible as well.
It's just, um, the co- I like the concept, you know, this concept has been going on for thou- hundreds of years, you know? A business down below and apartments up above, right, that's downtown Exeter.
Okay, so just one, just one more time, let's just take that as an example, that type.
That design review.
Just a hypothetical.
Sure.
Would, would that be allowed to have multiple housing units? In that case, combined with commercial?
Yes, we, we do currently have a multifamily ordinance.
I thought that was North Row north of North.
No, no, multifamily is also allowed in that strip of commercial. I could display the map for you again, I mean, it's right in your book right there, yeah. Yeah, it's just that strip, when you turn off a North Road, head up north towards Zipping on the right-hand side. That, that you can do multifamily, um, commercial.
We're talking about extending this out, maybe a proposal.
It's just that right-hand side.
Exactly, yes.
Yes, the le- the left-hand side is all zoned commercial.
Okay, now.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why, we can try to pull out the mixed use as a component of the multifamily change.
Thank you, yeah.
It did get kinda lost in this.
In that flyer, it tells you, it shows that little map, it points that out on that map.
I think what happened was, we went through all the parcels and our multifamily ordinance and only found one.
Right.
That worked, and it was on North Road.
Oh, here it is, here it is right here.
You guys have, um, does anybody have other inputs?
I guess I'd just like to address Picky and, and say, I mean, I hear your concern, or when you said, you use the word conservation, then you have authority. And this is conservation with a small c.
Yes.
And then, and just so you're clear, in, in no way is the planning board suggesting that we're going to interfere with your authority statutorily that you have to make your own judgments, but we, we could, we could just use the word con- I mean, that's really what this ordinance has been about for the last 35 years, been conserving. Glenn always talked to us about, he said, look at an old New England village, you have the, you know, the homes and the businesses clustered.
Yep.
And then the outline areas are preserved, and this is basically what this, this is, so, again, we're not observing any of your.
No, my point was just to note that as this moves forward, we meet separately from you, and it's nice to be part of that discussion, so that.
We'd love to have you, cause nobody, nobody ever comes to our hearings, so these, these will go through a series of public hearings, any changes.
Right, so just to be informed and participate in that, so there are no surprises, which then you have to explain, why weren't we at least told that this was a possibility?
To every single one.
Oh, I know that, I know, you're, you're invited to ours to report every time too.
Yeah, it's like, well, I'm spying on you.
Yes, well, you can report as well, yes.
Just one other thing on the cluster subdivision.
Which one?
Question.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, as, um, in your opinion, should this type of residential development be incentivized or required? Could you split that into questions, cause if, if somebody says yes, you won't be able to tell what they're saying yes to.
That's a good point.
Or no.
And those are two very different.
Those are two very different things, yeah.
That's a good point.
Well, that, that's it, I mean, this, this whole housing thing revolves around, uh, land cost, and what you can do with the land, so, I don't know. I don't think there's any good answers, Brett.
Well, it's.
We can clarify that, that it would be the density bonus, would be the incentive.
Right, and the drawing that you have shows an example.
Yeah, but we can clarify it in the question, so people know, and then if it was required, it would be for all new.
Those are the bonus units, you get two extra units because you preserve more land.
Those are really good edits to these, um.
That's great.
We can, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I, I just, I just had one other thing, it's not about, um, any of the sheets, but it's still about the HOP process, so would now be an appropriate time to, to ask.
Check.
The question, it's something that, that I've brought up at previous meetings, and it's not necessarily something that's gonna be part of any ordinance, but more, I just kinda wanna get your thoughts on it. When Dover amended their ordinances to, to kind of create more ADUs and tiny homes and things like that.
Yeah.
Something that they did is they worked with Service Credit Union, um, on, on, I, I don't remember the nature of the agreement, but it was, um, aimed at helping to finance.
Right.
ADUs and tiny homes, because like, y- you know, it's great for us to have these options in towns legally, but it doesn't mean that anybody's gonna be able to afford to actually. You know, some of them already exist as structures, and so a lot of those will m- maybe be the first ones, but when it comes to actually building them, it can be really expensive.
Yes.
And so I'm just curious, your thoughts based on your work with other communities about potential ADU finance options, that, uh, financial institutions that we can partner with, what your thoughts are there?
So we looked into it, I think we reported back at a meeting that you weren't with us.
Oh, okay.
So I think that's where there's a disconnect.
Okay.
So we looked, we contacted Dover, we talked with them, Ryan, who was part of that, Ryan Pope.
Yeah, Ryan Pope.
Is now at New Hampshire Housing, so then we had him in Jaffrey again recently, they're asking the same question.
Okay.
So what he suggested is that if that's something, cause it's a non-regulatory thing, it's educational, it's about building relationships, and then letting property owners know that this exists, he suggested somebody from the town talking with local lenders.
Okay.
And trying to kind of follow the model, he said that's what he had, he, as he came from a banking background, so he saw an opportunity and said, like, there needs to be a vehicle.
Yeah.
People can use that's easy, and that doesn't, it's not gonna be so cumbersome, because it's expensive.
Okay.
So that's what he suggested.
Yeah.
There are a couple banks in the area that someone from Brentwood could talk to.
Yeah, that's helpful, that probably, that came up the day when we, we had our, the thing at 5 o'clock and I was coming to work, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I got here about 6, so that was probably that, yeah.
And then Jaffrey's gonna do the same, their planner's gonna talk with some of the banks, um, and then they have a housing committee. So some of the housing committee members are gonna be part of that conversation, and it may take a little while, I think Ryan got it moving faster than probably some people, but.
Really, yeah, yeah, Ryan, eh, he, he's a, he's a go-getter, I know him well, so yeah.
So he'd be worth talking to if, um.
Yeah, I, I can get in touch with him, I've worked with him at, uh, when I was with New Hampshire Housing, so.
Perfect, yeah.
Would that process start, feel like, potentially right now, or to be after an applicant came in and had a sizable piece of property that might be conducive for smaller, you don't wanna say tiny house, but.
Accessory dwellings, yeah.
I mean, you could speak to when you think it'll start.
Yeah.
It's really open to interpretation, but it's, it's, the idea is that because you have this already, if you were to make any changes to the accessory dwelling ordinance, or they get handed down from Concord, it would be nice to go and do this and figure out a path forward, so that if a homeowner does wanna make one and then live in it, or rent it, or whatever, it would be an easy path.
Just, just in case some people ask questions, I'm sure they, you know, you're thinking about some of these questions, but if somebody were asking you as an expert in the field.
people, what do you think the average cost of building an ADU or converting space, do you have any ideas on that?
I mean, it's, all depends, but it's like the equivalent of building a small home.
Yeah.
It's not insignificant.
It boils down to the, um, really the, the property cost, too. But if you do an ADU, you already own it, that's good, but we're popping them up for like-
Well, and that's-
I've heard three hundred quoted.
Yeah.
If you have to upgrade your septic, too, that's-
And that adds on to it.
Right.
Right.
Sometimes.
I had this septic, which I could tie into the well-
Yeah.
driveway, it was still three hundred.
Yep.
That doesn't surprise me, that's why, I think, part of your reason for wanting to find out about the financing for people is, it's a significant investment.
Yeah.
Not everyone's gonna be able to do one, or choose to do one.
Would it be helpful to have a bank representative come to a planning board meeting?
I, I was thinking the same thing.
I have a relationship with Bangor Savings Bank, and they're all about that kinda stuff, I could reach out to them.
Yeah, I was just in, uh, Pentucket Bank the other day, and they had a sign up, unfortunately, I thought I had, I took a picture of it, wrong phone. And, uh, but, um, it indicated first-time homeowners and, um, availability of funds and helping you get started, so I thought it was an interesting-
That's nice.
Yeah.
And this external ADU ordinance is important, because it will lower that cost significantly. If you already have a garage, and all you need to do is finish the second floor, I know you're gonna have to add some plumbing in and so forth, but you don't have to do a foundation, it, it'll lower that cost significantly.
You have, you have to have a septic system, chances, chances are you may have to have a, a separate septic system.
Not if you have the slope, I mean, not all property is, is equal, if you have the slope to reach a septic, that's where the rubber-
In terms of what your, your approved design allows, how many bedrooms?
You can, there is a waiver process for that.
Yeah, the recognizing-
I got a waiver for mine, and I'll explain why. A house is, septic system is designed per bedroom, right? If I have a three-bedroom home, it's just my, my wife and I and one child. So this system's really designed for six people, with only three really using it.
The tough, tough part, though, stuff I didn't really elaborate on, is the fact that once that approval goes through, that's, that goes with the property, doesn't go with the family.
Yeah, your family.
So then, then a family-
If it fails, I'm, I'm liable for that, and I don't have to replace my septic.
Right.
Everybody is, but you kinda like to forewarn people, and that's what the whole process of septic design is about.
Mm-hmm. The waiver's all about.
I mean, question, so five, what time would you like us there?
We'd like to get in by four to set up, um, three-thirty or four, do you think that's possible? We don't need all of you there, but if Mark could be there, um-
I'll talk to Andy, yep.
Yeah.
And I, and I will be there. It's gonna be a rough day for me. We have a meeting directly after.
Can we have that meeting there?
No. No microphone.
Why not?
Because we don't have a microphone there.
We have a, there's a-
Can't you just tape it?
Huh?
Can't you just tape it?
Tape it with what, sir?
I don't know, we used to tape it.
I don't, huh?
We used to tape it, right?
No.
What do we do when we have, like, big contentious hearings?
They can crowd in here. I mean, that's my attitude.
No, we did the, but we-
Why did we spend all this money on this audiovisual equipment, right? And not utilize the room for it, right? Especially, especially things that are contentious.
We haven't had this forever.
Um-
Huh?
But for this one night, so that we don't all have to rush back. And there is an audio system over there, because we used to-
It just makes it worse, now I have to bring everything there.
I, I think all you're required to do is really have a tape recorder on the table, you record, you have a tape of the minutes.
Have you ever tried do- doing minutes from that?
It's not my job.
All right, we'll take the-
Well, I'll be here waiting for you, if you decide to show up, then show up.
If you decide that you're gonna come back here, you guys don't have to be there until seven on the dot, we'll stay and we'll do cleanup, so, whatever works for you.
Okay.
It's great. Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Keep one planning member behind.
Thank you.
I, I volunteer Bruce Stevens.
We'll take Bruce, that's fine.
I'll, I'll be there, help set up, a lot of times the tables aren't set up, but you may not use too many tables, you may just-
No, we wanna set some tables up, so people can also look around and then set- And we'll try to set it up, we'll have a registration table, then we'll have the educational stuff, so people have to go buy those first, and then the four stations with the posters for the regulatory stuff.
No.
And then we'll be buzzing around, it'll be fun for people, they can stay the whole two hours if they want, they can come in for ten minutes on their way to pick up their kids-
They can sleep over.
They can stay over. We, we will have left, but-
Thank you, we have so many questions, don't take us long.
No, no. This is wonderful. I would be more upset if you just blankly stared at me and didn't care.
Furthermore, I've already-
If you care this much, it's great.
I've already sent out all the public notices for that hearing.
Has been here.
Mm-hmm.
We'll make sure we have a quorum here.
So, a, a question, um, that's the invitation that has been posted, or the notice that has been posted.
Mm-hmm.
You've just said that people can come in for a few minutes, explore and leave. When I read that, I get the implication that I have to be there five to seven.
We lock the door.
Yeah. So it's some language or verbiage even on Facebook that says, come in-
An open house.
Open house.
Oh, yeah, open house, yeah.
Cause this is like a commitment.
Stop by between five and seven.
Something.
Yeah, we can do, we can update this and get you another one, Mark, to put out, if you wanna, plus it'll help just get people's attention-
Sure.
They see it slightly different.
If there's gonna be a presentation, like a ten-minute thing, you can note that in the calendar, too. Come in at five, five-thirty, there'll be a short presentation-
Yeah.
And browse, just so people know what the framework of the time is.
I like that, yeah.
How will that work, will it be init-
We talked about a ch- in open house format, so-
So there's no, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Drop in.
I'd even use that terminology, drop in.
Food will be provided?
Between five and seven, sure.
We, we never get confirmation that there was gonna be food, so we didn't wanna advertise it was gonna be food and not have that happen.
We're still working on it.
We can say that was, that would lure people in, and we'll say it was a supply chain.
Bring you on.
Very few people to partake, partook of any of the food at the gathering.
Really?
Oh, interesting.
We packed it all up.
Really?
Few people came for cookies, some bottles of water, but they didn't browse that.
Always attendance.
Good, it's about ninety people.
That's great. All right, thank you all, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
That was a good addition, thank you.
I'd love to read you that question, 'cause I'm first time reading this.
Give me a card, I don't have a card on me.
Yeah, write it down.
All right.
Mark, we have another opportunity to get something into the newsletter first time.
Yeah, we, that, yeah, it was, um-
The one that's-
I mean, just keeping the reminders going.
Yeah, there, um, we did already approved a publication that will be coming out. I can try and find it if you want.
Nope.
You wanna see it?
I trust you. Good job.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, sign ordinance? It's in the back of your agenda packet.
You know what I didn't do? I can't believe I didn't do it.
Um-
Meeting minutes.
We, we need to notice this as a public hearing, right? To adopt it.
Oh, um, well, yes, but we-
Tommy will have to, uh, Tommy will have to do the vote, but we should start the, the public hearing process. I, I would like to see in the next sixty days to have us have our first public hearing on the sign ordinance.
As I was saying.
That's sassy.
All right, all right.
We were going to give out a postcard or a letter to all business owners and invite them. Is that still something you would like to do?
Sure.
On my desk, I have, from Andrea, a list of businesses. Would you like to see that list and approve it?
No, no, I mean, you, you, I know that the Industrial Development Committee had very little results from trying to engage local businesses, but hey, this way nobody can say they weren't given an opportunity to come and discuss.
We don't, we still don't have to do that.
Does, wait, does the list, do you have emails on that list?
No, they're from a, they're from our tax cards, so it's just addresses.
I, I think that, you've done well there, Mark.
Um, uh, did you ask the economic development person?
I thought you were economic development person.
I, no, I'm not on the Economic Development Committee.
I thought it was disbanded, it has not been disbanded.
It has not, I'm not on it, um-
Since when? I didn't realize you were on it.
We don't have to talk about this.
Your name still appears.
My name's still on it. It, it, there were just, it was, um, there were a lot of planning board members, and I was on a lot of committees, so I'm not on that committee.
That, that's a fair comment. Do you, do you- Do you have a contact person?
Yes, I will-
Can you email me that contact person?
Yes.
And I will reach out to them? Would you, you-
Kristen, didn't we have a list from Jillian?
We did, we had a spreadsheet with, actually, ask Jillian.
Yeah.
She would have access to the file.
But I, I do think that a lot of people, you get so many emails every day, they just click it off, swipe it off, and if, something like a postcard might catch their attention.
And Mark, I think she had addresses, uh, email addresses and telephone numbers.
Yeah. So-
Thank you.
The only thing that, um, I am a little concerned about, and we can get, take input at the public hearing, but the illuminated signs turned off at ten, I think we got some feedback at the last meeting that that wasn't necessarily, um, that, that businesses might not look on that favorably, because it's advertising even if they're closed.
That's a good point, I think that's a great point.
Yeah, I, 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 I have a similar comment along those veins, 'cause originally, my, my initial reaction was great, because, you know, I'm thinking signs shouldn't be illuminated, because then you have people pulling in accidentally or on purpose to, you know, do, you know, who knows what. Um, but then, like you were saying, I, I think it was Jim, uh, Meeshow, who was actually here, who talked about as like an advertising opportunity, and I, I found that potentially quite persuasive, so, I, I'm also torn, um, torn on that one. And also, in addition to what Jim said, that was interesting to me, also, I can't remember who brought this up, but also as sort of a public safety thing, having, having lighting, but that kinda cuts both ways, because, you know, there's some lighting is good, but then we also have the lighting on the corner of South and, a, a, and, and 125, that, that Liz and I both have discussed and other people-
But through, through the site plan approval process, that, that is gonna be addressed.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so-
If you're in favor, I'd, I'd be in favor of striking that requirement to turn the lights off.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor of leaving them on, also, I wouldn't wanna seem struck. And then on South Road, that's more the spotlights, I mean, I know it's illuminated signs, but-
Yeah, it's not the business sign.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's true.
So does anybody disagree with crossing out that line under number six?
Yeah, strike it, yep.
Yeah. Any, any dissent?
I would have no objection.
All right. Um, Mark, can you let Glenn know, or can you just do that?
Yeah, I was, I was like super multitasking, and I was hoping that you weren't gonna say anything like super important.
We did, we-
But you did.
We amended, yeah.
Number six, I heard number six, I, I, I heard number six, what would you like to amend it to?
Cross it out.
Just completely remove number six.
Yes.
What do people think with summer coming on, should we, uh, hold a public, first public hearing early September, or do we do it now, you know, somewhat before summer? I mean, we're talking sixty days from now, you're talking into, well, into June.
I think you get more participation in September.
You do?
Yeah, that's what I think. You're still busy with vacations-
Sure.
Holidays.
So we, we could put that on Mark's plate, maybe make a motion to, I'll make a motion to, uh, hold a public hearing in September, and it could be on either date, whatever date you have more time in terms of the schedule and applications.
There was a motion?
So that would be either the fourth or the eighteenth, am I looking at that right?
Probably.
Yes. Yes, fourth of the eighteenth.
Is there a second?
Well, that's right after, or right before- That's right before Labor Day, so you may want to do it the eighteenth.
Yeah, so maybe the eighteenth then? Would you be amenable to that?
Absolutely, 'cause people are gonna be back in here by-
Yeah.
So there's a motion to have a hearing on the change of the sign ordinance on September eighteenth?
I'll second.
Maybe we could just say the first public hearing, 'cause I think if we make any changes, we're gonna have to have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or the eighteenth?
Yes.
Eighteenth.
Any other business?
Yeah, I was, that's part of the multitasking. I was, I was trying to print out the, the minutes, I forgot to put it on the agenda when I made up my packets.
Uh, we, we can do that, well-
Well, I can just print it out right now.
Well, is there anything else, 'cause if that's all?
I have another topic to bring up, but-
Oh, okay.
Talk about that topic while I-
Well, I think you have some pictures that, uh, did you get my pictures that I sent you?
This is Tanya, Tanya Lane?
Yes, you know, I, I don't wanna get a big discussion going, but I'd taken some pictures there today. And I thought it'd be helpful for people to, uh, to see some of those, there's one, you know, we're talking about compaction, Stephanie, and, uh,
Yeah.
This is no way to measure that now, but I would say that that big crack in one year going across the driveway is probably an indication-
Not a good sign.
And, but keep, keep looking, that, that was probably the best picture, the one that I thought was, and here's a second one. Now, I, I think you said, and I wanna defer to the engineer, Stephanie, but if we're talking a foot of cover, the way I took that, I tried to get down in the ditch and take it, but there's maybe three inches of cover on that pipe.
Yeah.
And now there's another one coming up, uh, I guess that may be the same one, but there's some more.
You see a problem?
Yeah, so here, here's what I wanted to do, I mean, I had a chance to, to watch today, the, your meeting of the seventeenth of April. And, you know, I heard, uh, board members had some great questions, I heard the, Glenn used the word startled, and I think my, the word that I would use would be, um, simply bewildered at some, some of the responses that were given that night, uh, by the engineer. I almost honestly thought that maybe, in my six weeks that I was away, that you guys had hired the third grade at Swayze School to explore this and come up with some answers to some of these very good questions. And I just thought it was very unprofessional, but that's all I'm gonna say about that, it's all about going forward, so my, my, uh, request or motion, whatever it would be, would be to ask Mark to compile a certain amount of, certain information, and I'll give him a list of, we'll talk about it as soon as he comes back. But if Steph, if you were willing to meet at some point in the next couple of months, uh, with, onsite with, um, the rep from TEC, and I really think it should be him and not somebody else in the business, but, uh, what's his first name?
Chris.
Chris, Chris. So he would be there, uh, if you, if you could be there, we'd certainly invite the applicant, the subdivision owner, to, to be in attendance, and, uh, just have a talk. There's another photo coming up that shows a break in the pipe, it hardly comes out of the ground, and then there's a three-inch space, and then another pipe that somebody just kinda stuck on there. So, I think we need to have, ask TEC, ask Chris to make a report, we'll number the culverts on the subdivision plan, and then have him go out, and I, I wanna see, have him measure, tell us how much cover is on, on those pipes, and what the minimum cover would be. I, I think, you know, you had an idea, I hate to, there's a couple, two or three that are still gravel. So unless they can come up with a, agree to a, uh, some remediation on the others, then maybe they oughta throw those out and, and put in RCP to start with, but we've got the plastic in there, if they would agree to do, I call them level spreaders, but head wall, whatever you wanna call them, if they could connect those up and do the proper, uh, side slopes around them and compact them, that may be the way to go. But I'd like to see this happen in the next couple of months so that there's some time in the construction season to have this cleaned up. I just hate to see this go on another year. And I was going to ask Mark specifically, what type of, what request have we had from the owner of the subdivision? Has he asked us to release more funds? I kind of inferred that, but I don't know. So when Mark comes back in, we'll ask him about that. But just to kind of, our fourth grade teacher at Swayze School taught us, get all your givens down. So if we can go through that and understand exactly what we have presently. And then the second part of the conversation could be how to deal with that or how to remediate it.
Yeah.
We want to be reasonable, you know, my anger has gone away since I've been gone about it.
Sure, okay.
Not all of it, but some of it.
Vacation relaxation.
Vacation relaxation. So let's just see, how can we fix it, how can we move beyond it? And still be cognizant of the taxpayers having to spend money, you know, down the road. Would that be something that you would be amenable to meeting?
Yeah, I'm fine doing that if the board's comfortable with it, I know.
Well, you could come back to the board and we'd vote on whatever you suggest, but you have the knowledge, you're a good personality, and you, I think you'd just be a good person to.
I think it would be an asset for the board.
Negotiate.
Because you're going to look at it in a neutral perspective, and when you come back, no, you'll come back with a professional overview. And I think that's important to the board because when you see this or you go over there, it's concerning.
Yeah, that crack is really telling a story there.
Yes.
So if we do that, I think if Chris is going to come back with a report, is this what we need to have?
Very good point.
Is it even up to standard of what they?
Yeah, does it even meet the plan?
Well, you're absolutely right, because if it doesn't mean the basic standards for cover, then, you know, that's as far as this conversation can go. But I'm just, you know, very much against the town laying down and letting these people tell us what they're going to do. So when Mark comes back, I want to ask him, we've had a formal request for a bond reduction.
I think, yeah, I think that's what.
Let me show you what we had. And then I think we ought to be straightened up. If Steph thinks that, you know, push comes to shove, we just say, no, we're not giving you any money back, and let them, let them take us to spirit for it, if they really want to. I don't think we're going to do that. They'll want us to move this thing along, and time is money to them, I suppose.
Yeah, that's what Bruce was talking about, I call it a flared end section. It's basically a similar shape to this, just made out of concrete.
That's fine.
They would take that out and strip the concrete piece. My understanding is it is doable to attach concrete to the end of a plastic pipe that's been done.
So Mark, we wanted to ask you a question, is, what's the situation presently? Is the applicant or the owner of the subdivision awaiting our response? Did he, what did he ask for, did he ask for a bond reduction?
No, I've had no request for bond reduction, I've had nothing.
No, how much money, can you check and tell us how much money, not tonight, but how much money stays, is in that bond, remaining bond money?
I did know the figure off the top of my head, but I'm unsure of it at this moment, and I don't want to state it.
Okay, well, that's fine. So when you were out of the room, Steph has agreed, if we set up a meeting with Chris herself, the subdivision, the owner of the subdivision, and I think any board members that want to attend, if we find in advance of the meeting that we're going to have a quorum, we just simply post it. We're not going to make decisions out there, but there's no reason why any interested board members could not participate in getting a better understanding of what's going on.
Wouldn't it be behoove, pardon me, wouldn't it behoove this board to invite this particular individual to a meeting date?
Well, a meeting date in the field, I mean, we've got to get some traction on this thing and get this thing rolling so everybody knows, pretty much knows the facts. But we were talking, when you were out, it'd be nice to know again the amount of the bond that remaining in any correspondence that you've had with them in terms of them wanting to further the process. Maybe they just made a phone call to you and said, hey, look, we'd like to, we think we're done here, we've completed our project.
I would have to look in the file.
Somebody must have made some outreach to the town, I would assume.
Yeah, there was something.
Yeah, I think you're right, hold on.
I believe that we had a response back from the engineer saying basically that we met the conditions of the plan, the requirements of the plan, Wayne Morrell, and that we feel that we're done. And we didn't officially, we didn't have any board votes or any real board discussion on how to respond to him, but I think there was some trigger there that caused us to begin to think about it.
What was the name of that subdivision?
Oh, we.
Do you remember the name?
You know, that's, wow. Tanya Lane, I'll never forget, but.
It had a different name.
Okay, well, I like the idea of having a meeting in the field, because I vaguely remember him being here and had some discussion about it, so we're a little forced. Had a couple of opportunities to talk about this. Let's get in and Chris is stopping to look at it.
Maybe next week, Steph, you could give Mark some possible dates, that would be great. And then Mark can let the board know, and I mean, I for one would want to go, and maybe some other people would want to be there.
If we get too many people in, we're going to have to.
Oh, yeah, we'll put up a quick notice, and we're not going to take any vote there onsite, we'll come back to the board. We can just put a note on the door out here, two days in advance, three days in advance, and say we're.
Well, maybe it will be raining and we can go over three ponds right after.
Yeah, okay, let's not go there.
You'd notice it as a public sidewalk, which falls under the conditions of a public hearing. I would have to post that 12 days prior.
Okay, so I should give some dates at least.
It's not like a public meeting, like, I'd have to double down with Glenn, but that's what I'm going to go with right now, is that I have to post it 12 days prior.
Before we wrap, I have two motions, one is the minutes, and then one before that, that's procedural. But I don't want to cut off the conversation, though.
Okay, well, I think we're done, I think we're done with those.
Can I bring up three ponds and the puddling?
Yeah.
I sent pictures.
I saw those.
I don't think Chris can remember that.
Have we made a request?
I did, yeah. Go ahead.
I just watched your last meeting there when I was away, and I want to apologize that I don't think maybe I best informed my student about what I saw there. And we, there was, in my opinion, and I'm not the engineer, Chris will figure this out, I don't think there's any issues within the town right away, any issues with the roadway. What I was mentioning to Doug was, as we stood there and talked for 15 minutes with the homeowner, I was getting a little bored and I started looking around, and I see these water puddles in their driveway, but that's nothing to do with the town, that's, I mean, that's.
That was the last conversation we had last week.
It's the homeowners association thing. No, I did, and then one other thing I wanted to say, Kristen, you asked a question, and I think Mark gave you some misinformation. We were talking, you asked why the town was plowing that road now, before it was accepted.
He wasn't, he wasn't plowing it.
Well, he went up there with the truck, and we saw where he hit the wing on the guy's curbing, granite curbing, in front of the house that Doug and I looked at. So, and then even at town meeting, we got it on tape, at town meeting, Wayne said, oh, yeah, they asked me to go up there and push that stuff back, that was Wayne's own words, and that was, you know, he talked about the loader.
When he says push that stuff back, I think.
It was the snow.
Well, yes. It was concerning the fire hydrant.
Right, but here's the deal, and you mentioned, Kristen, in response to Kristen's question, you said, well, that's a dry hydrant, well, there's no dry hydrants in there at all, there's no cisterns, there's no dry hydrants, that's a force main, and the force main pressure comes from 90-foot, 25,000 gallons of water up in the air across the street. So.
Oh, okay, sure, all right.
So getting back to, getting back to the question of why the town was plowing that, we've had this issue with Wayne a number of times, all right? And so I think when we do finally make our recommendation to the board of slogan to accept the roads, the roadway, we need to give them a copy of the road diagram. And of course, that road diagram shows the individual driveways, some of the driveways encompass three or four homes. And he should not be, it should be very clear to the board and to him what is private roadway there, and there's a lot of, a fair amount of private drives. Some of them serve two houses, but some of them serve up to six houses. So, and in terms of what Kristen was asking, that's a liability to have the town getting involved in going up those driveways if they damage the snow or the sod or the curbing or whatever. That is clearly the responsibility of the homeowners association, and they know that.
It would be good to have Paul here, because I think that's a.
Oh, yeah.
Planning board select board thing, and he can take that back to the select board, so.
I mean, we did this last year.
I'm getting the end of this that I shouldn't get, like.
Can you hold that thought until Paul's?
I'm waiting for you, I'm waiting for you to give me some sort of action.
Well, the action I'm recommending is.
The board can vote on it, and then I can take this.
I won't ask to make a motion tonight, but I will ask that you have a copy of that road layout.
Right, but you do realize that you've already voted to adopt that roadway, so.
Well, and that's, and that's fine, in fact, I thought you guys pulled that back.
We, we did, and that was one of the procedural motions that I was going to make that I think might help clarify.
So it's not to criticize anybody, but it's just to say.
Valid point, and I apologize.
It's just to make it clear to all the powers that be what the town is responsible for, what it's not. Now, in this case here, it ticked me off watching that thing, and it ticked me off at town meeting, hearing Wayne say to us, well, they asked me to come back and push that, some of the snow back. They plow that, a landscape company plows that with pickup trucks, but that is their responsibility. The road wasn't accepted, if they need to hire a loader to come in and move the snow, they do that on their own.
I agree with you, but I think it's a select board issue. So we should do the best job we can to give information about what's part of the road, what's not part of the road. But as far as somebody going out there and moving snow around and whether or not, you know.
He's being a liability, causing a liability to the town, and I think as the planning board members, we should say, hey, look, this road hasn't been accepted, this should not be happening, period, it's clear.
Paul, we'll tell Paul.
All right, so I have two motions. So my first motion, because I moved to table this agenda item last meeting to today, and so now I'm going to make a motion that we continue or further table this discussion and potential recommendation until June 5th. I figured that the May 15th meeting will not be, you know, would not be conducive to that. So I'll make a motion to table to June 5th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You abstained, sorry, you got that? We did two of those.
I'm still on the first one.
Okay.
Who's the second to Doug's first motion to table?
Mr. Finney.
Doug and Doug. And to approve the minutes?
Myself made the motion, and then Doug second.
And Steph abstained.
The 4:17 minutes. And that's passed, but Steph abstains. Gotcha.
Did you receive a contract from Chris?
No. No, the last correspondence I had from Chris was the new applicant, the one that we had the design review hearing on 125 for, has applied, and he will have a comment letter by the 8th. You already have a comment letter from Mr. Greenwood, I highly encourage you to read that comment letter.
Maybe other people received it, I was looking in my town email today, and I couldn't find that.
What you have received would look like this, and it's Revolution Real Estate, so if I go R I B.
It's a link to a folder, you can go in.
I couldn't even find anything that came in in the last month.
Oh, that's all good, because he sent us a bunch of stuff.
There's an under. Included in that packet, Mark, was that Glenn's letter to the ZBA, is that part of that transmission?
No.
They haven't gone to the ZBA.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about the ZBA meeting here a week ago, was that?
I wouldn't send you a packet of ZBA materials, sir.
Are you talking about Kingston?
No, I think that's what we got.
You got stuff from the Kingston ZBA, yes, because we were named as.
But I think that was a separate email.
Yeah. Let's stay on this Revolution Real Estate topic, and then we can change to that one, how about, we'll do that. So this is Revolution Real Estate, I think I might have sent out just this portion, the site plan application, and inside of that, you've got the civil set drainage report, my legal and a butters notice, these will be Glenn's comments, planning board comments, site plan and conditional use permit, too. Now, what you've received from Town of Kingston.
Oh, no, no, I'm not interested in Town of Kingston, I only get that's anything else.
Well, the Town of Kingston stuff is, I don't think, germane to Brentwood.
But if you really haven't gotten an email from Mark in a month, then you should.
Well, I'd like to get the one for Revolution, how many house slots is the Revolution application?
I should not show this plan because we've already noticed it, and we shouldn't really be talking about it in a public meeting.
Fair enough.
From, I just hearkened, Glenn came through my brain there, yeah.
Okay.
But if your email's not working, maybe somebody here can.
What I'll do, at this exact moment, I will.
Resend it?
Yeah.
I have a question for the chair.
Yes.
I was asked by a resident, is there a reason why we're not going for quotes against TEC?
Yeah, we had some discussion about that. If we have, whoever's doing the reviews for us then can't bring proposals, can't work for the developers, so there's a limited option, limited number of options. I guess I'd like to see his contract. Is this somebody who's interested in bidding?
No.
Okay, just wanted to know why we're not, yeah.
We were having the discussion.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it at all, I think you made some good points, Steph, that the choices are probably pretty slim. Yeah, it can't hurt to throw it out there and see what comes in, but, yeah, that's a concern, is it prevents you from being able to do private development projects?
If you feel comfortable with TEC, I think now the spotlight is on there. I just, as a farmer, wonder if I'm seeing stuff like this, just because I know how water runs down a hill, what am I missing, what other stuff, as far as calculations and all that stuff go, that we wouldn't even be aware of, I wouldn't even think about?
How long have they been installed there?
Six, seven years.
For who?
TEC, how long have they been employed by the town?
They were hired after Steve's.
Yes. Been quite a while.
Mark, is that a process, maybe you can ask.
Glenn?
Is it Andrea?
An RFP?
Yeah.
RFP.
Yeah.
Showing my age. There's RFPs, there's RFQs.
It could be either.
Right, RFP stands for Request for Proposals, RFQ is Request for.
Qualifications.
Qualifications.
I'd kind of like to take that first step to just find out if there's interest before we ask. And then if there is, then we could do a full RFP. Does that make sense?
Would they go out like through NHMA, you know, through the MHP?
I'm not familiar with that process whatsoever.
Just being in the National Municipal Association, people, a lot of people read the monthly magazines, and they have widespread dissemination.
I'm sure there's certain forums, just like people who construct things or construction companies, like.
Um, I think it's just on the town's website usually.
See, National Municipal Association has that monthly magazine, you could put a little ad in that.
Yeah.
Or even on their website, the NHMA website, you can list, I know you can list job.
We could post on our website and reach out to area consulting firms, a lot of towns do that.
We'd want to include Chris in that conversation, that's what Glenn said before.
Like, just from a personal standpoint, if you feel that remedial changes are being made and things may go smoother, if you're happy, but you're not happy with what's had, try and. like you're not happy with what's transpired recently, but if you have confidence, I guess I use the word confidence, that they may be still a good choice for the town.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering how long they've been working with us. Six or seven years isn't long enough to like notice any fatal flaws. Sometimes things take a few years to really...
That's what I'm worried about.
Show the problem. Just as a company, my personal opinion, that company is a really good company, and they know their stuff. And I've always gotten, you know, a good impression from Chris. Maybe he's just been super busy. But not like that's an excuse we want to be, but...
You know, I mean, I guess it could be in a way. I was just dismayed at the way he presented himself and the way he answered questions. It just seemed like there was no apology. There was no seemingly overt concern for what had happened.
At the meeting?
Yeah, at the meeting here, the one I watched on tape.
Yeah, I haven't been able to watch it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I watched that and...
I know, I was so mad I missed it. I just was like, you guys wouldn't have wanted me.
I just ask you, some point, watch that seventeen...
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely concerning, because we wanted them to kind of get the understanding that we're not happy.
To be, to be fair, Glenn also sat there and said, he took the responsibility on himself for not communicating about the waiver being withdrawn.
I have an idea in my mind what a professional person is, a licensed engineer. Don't say it, because Paul's an attorney.
Steph, yeah, but, I mean, you're supposed to have some professional manner in which you operate. And again, I'm shutting up now, but just please watch that meeting, that minutes.
Yeah, I'll have to catch up on that.
All right, any other business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.